Good evening, everyone. Before we actually get started today, I've had the pleasure of having a job shadow today, mayor for a day, and so I am going to invite up Ukiah to call the meeting to order and do roll call and lead us in the pledge. So Ukiah, if you'd like to come up here to complete your mayor for the day, we've had, I think, a wonderful day. City Hall Civic Center, right here. Yes, and we'll give you one second.
Recording in progress.
All right, I'd like to call the council meeting to order.
Now?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to call the council meeting to order and request that Claudia Sisneros do the roll call, please.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drabkin.
Here. Um, all right. I pledge allegiance. All right, would you like to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Ukiah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 9th, 2024 regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council. We're going to start this evening with comments from community members. Any interested audience member is invited to provide comment, and comments that require some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. I've already asked our city manager to start working with the chief of police on some of the public comment that we've received in advance tonight, so specific to letters from the school district and school superintendent. I've asked the city manager and chief of police to start crafting a response to that. We also sent that letter out to the council and asked for council to provide any input to city staff as they work on their response. Other things that come up that may require additional staff response, I'll also assign those as appropriate. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person and for a total of 30 minutes. And then I would like to add that we ask that we don't applaud or boo. We know that there's a lot of emotional topics that come up, and sometimes there's interest in expressing that emotion. We try to get through this business portion of the meeting, so you are welcome to come up and echo those comments as well, but we ask that you help us keep order in council chambers by not doing yelling or other noise making, essentially. If you're on Zoom this evening and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, and when your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. If you are not able to do that, you can also send a chat directly to our city recorder, and she will announce you. Also, as you come up to provide public comment, we ask that you provide your name and the city that you live in for the record. In addition to that, I just want to make a couple notes tonight. One is just to say that we are your partners here. We all want solutions to some of the issues that we know we're receiving public comment on tonight, and we're actively working on solutions in a lot of different ways. You know, when I first took office here as mayor, I said we would dedicate a full-time officer to prohibited camping. We have done that, we still do that. We communicate out about it as well, and hopefully you get some of that communications. I'm not going to go through everything, but just as a few points. We talked about setting up a program to have a more regular presence downtown. That has been in development and is on its way to launching with partnership Visit McMinnville. We talked about standing up our own program to have more community response to behavioral issues, mental health issues. We envisioned that program, we tried to get funding for it, we didn't, and instead we have thrown our support behind the county and their Health and Human Services, which is the government entity which responds to issues surrounding homelessness, mental health, drug addiction. And so, we've been working with them to talk about how we can continue to expand the county response and have more dedicated people to McMinnville. McMinnville, of course, being the county seat, which is important because in our downtown, we have a jail, we have drug addiction services, and we have mental health addiction services. So I say that just to remind you that we are here as your partner, and we are also upset. We also find these areas where we have prohibited camping that are very difficult or at times seemingly impossible to enforce, we also find them unacceptable. And from the whole wraparound view of that, it's unacceptable for the people in those situations, it's unacceptable for the rest of us that aren't living that situation but that don't have the safety or other standards that we expect and we demand. So as you provide your comments tonight, I just please encourage you to think of us as your partners. I know that I don't forward every suggestion, but internally, we talk about every suggestion. We also don't want to put forward ineffective policy and things that won't change our ability to enforce. And I am very clear that you all don't want to hear from me about the things we can't do. You want to hear what we can do. And I just want you to know that we want an improved response. I hope you see our efforts through regular cleanup, full-time enforcement, commitment to our partners, and continuing to creatively look and work for solutions. And so, with that, I will invite up the first person that has signed up for public comment. Thank you for being here.
First, before we begin, I do want to state for the record that Amber Johnson provided a letter. I emailed it to council, and it will be made part of the amended packet for tomorrow. And we'll start with Amanda Westfall.
Hello. My name's Amanda Westfall. I live in McMinnville, Oregon. I wanted to say thank you so much, Mayor Drabkin, for your letter that went out. I read it, and I learned from your letter about what the Downtown Association and Visit McMinnville is doing for the arts. I did the survey, and I'm asking everyone in this room and everyone on the council to, first of all, do the survey. I'm not a part of the Downtown Association, but I'll get to that. Do the survey, and please share it on Facebook. Like, everybody needs to fill out this survey because it's learning what McMinnville wants with public art. And the reason why I'm so passionate about it is because I'm so passionate about the arts that I started a nonprofit last year called St. Bezzie's Art Collab, shameless plug. And what we do is provide art supplies for anyone in need, and we provide free art healing workshops for groups going through whatever we focus on, forgiveness and childhood trauma. And I'm going to be working with the Henderson House in the coming months, I'm so excited, and other nonprofits in the area. And the Downtown Association is trying to open up a space for us McMinnvilleites to come and be a part of the arts. So everybody, please fill out the form, and I think that was it. I just wanted to say thank you. And also, congratulations on working with Harvard. Hello, that's awesome. Yeah, I'm super proud of you for being able to do that. I think we do have a mental health crisis, and I'm an artist, and I graduated George Parks University with an art degree, and I love people, and I thought to myself, how can I make a difference in my community and world? And this is how. And so that's why I started St. Bezzie's. I used to run an art gallery on Third Street, and I want to reopen, and I'm so ecstatic that the Downtown Association and Visit McMinnville are doing something because I am 1,000% volunteer all my hours. I don't care, I want to see this happen for our community because it's going to be absolutely phenomenal. I'm like, looking at the clock, I'm like, what else can I say?
You don't have to use all that.
No, oh, but I do. No, no, just go to my website if you want to learn more, stbezziesartcollab.com. Thank you so much. And you guys are really doing a great job. I love our town.
Thank you so much. And who has signed up next, please?
Next, we have Marissa Martinez.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Marissa Martinez, we live in McMinnville. So I'm just going to read the letter that I wrote about the homeless camping adjacent to school properties because I feel like it covers everything that I want to say. Our family has two children that attend Patton Middle School. There has been a steady increase of homeless campers and associated activity near the school and the varsity baseball field. This is a great cause for concern for many reasons. The kids in our community deserve to be able to walk to and from school without encountering dangers and behaviors such as open drug use, including fentanyl and methamphetamine, dirty needles, human feces, unleashed and unpredictable animals, people with severe mental illness, dangerous vehicles and debris. Many cities have ordinances that prohibit this activity a certain proximity from school zones. McMinnville should be no different. As a grown person, I don't feel comfortable walking by these areas. Now, imagine you're a child walking home from practice in the dark. It is only a matter of time before something happens. It is really difficult to watch our schools struggle with funding for basic needs such as water fountains and carpeting while thousands of dollars every month go to repeatedly clean up illegal camping and the associated garbage and hazardous materials. When taking our children to Joe Dancer for practice, we have had individuals run at our cars screaming obscenities. They have blocked the road and made it impassable, which has scared one of our kids to tears. What do visiting families think when they come to baseball games and we allow these dangers adjacent to where students play? It's embarrassing and reflects poorly on our whole community. We have and should have compassion for those that are suffering from homelessness and addiction and are trying to get help. However, there should be no tolerance for the types of behavior and crimes that we witness in these areas. That is not compassion. There are a great number of parents that feel this way, and we will continue to push for change to protect our students. We urge you to make those changes now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Towery, will you follow up with Marissa about ORS 195.505, which dictates our enforcement? Thank you. Who's next?
Next, we have Debbie Brockett.
Thank you. Welcome, superintendent. Joining us simultaneously? Wonderful. Thank you.
You just got me, so let me put my glasses on. Good evening, Mayor Drabkin, esteemed members of city council. My name is Debbie Brockett. I'm the superintendent of McMinnville School District. Alongside me is school board chair Jason Bison. We both are residents of McMinnville. We are here to discuss a matter, as you know, that deeply concerns both of our schools and our community. While we are empathetic to the houseless population, which we are, we are charged with acting with due diligence to maintain the safety of our students and staff. In the proximity of campsites to school grounds, specifically Patton Middle School, has led to increased concerns. This situation has prompted discussions on how to best ensure safe transit from our students, for our students, to and from school, and we truly do appreciate, Mayor Drabkin, our conversations that we have held over the past several months. Due to us not finding a solution, I was charged with reaching out to other superintendents, and which I did, and those not experiencing houseless issues around or near their schools attribute it to an ordinance that bans or prohibits camping near schools. The ordinances range from 100 to 1,500 feet from schools, with Sheridan even including all walking zones to schools. In our conversations with Mayor Drabkin, she has indicated that she does not want to be caught up in the circuit courts by violating the rights of the houseless, and we truly understand that concern. However, through some research, Oregon House Bill 2115 passed in 2021 states that Oregon cities and counties cannot enact outright camping bans. The law followed the 2018 Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruling Martin versus Boise, in which the court found cities couldn't punish houseless people for lying or sleeping on public property if they had no other place to rest. Therefore, what other cities have done to avoid litigation is determine a location where camping could take place, not near schools, from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM each day. Therefore, we come forward to propose the adoption of a similar ordinance in McMinnville prohibiting camping within 500 feet of school campuses and even going as long as saying a long designated McMinnville School District walk zones. This measure would significantly enhance the safety perimeter around our schools, allow for safe transit to and from school, and ensure a secure learning environment for our students and our staff. While proposing this ordinance, we remain empathetic towards the houseless population and understand the city's need to find balanced solutions that respect the dignity of all community members. Our primary goal, however, will always remain the safety and well-being of our students. In closing, I would like to emphasize that all students, including Patton Middle School students, deserve a safe transit to and from school, and we cannot wait to be reactive. We must be proactive to ensure to the fullest extent possible the safety of every student in our district. We urge the city council to consider this proposal with a gravity it demands, draw an inspiration from the successful implementation of other Oregon cities. And in closing, I've always found as a superintendent that we've had a great working relationship with city council. We do not want this to change that. We just want to come together and find a solution that can allow for safety for our students.
Thank you. Thank you for providing testimony today. Absolutely, discourse does not dissuade relationships, it helps build relationships. As I mentioned earlier, I've asked our city manager to start drafting a response, and I'm hoping that what we achieve through some of that is some clarity, also that details some of the actions the city has taken, so specific to time, place, and manner. We were early adopters of time, place, and manner, and that talks a little bit more about how some of these suggestions will or will not affect our ability to enforce in areas, especially where prohibited or illegal camping is already occurring, which I think is, you know, the area you are concerned about. So I too want us to keep an open dialogue, and I appreciate our working relationship, and there is nothing soured by having public discourse in any way. So thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Next, we have Sean Tinker.
Good evening, and thank you for coming.
Thanks. Thank you for having me here. So I wrote a letter, too, but I think I'm going to go a little more off script. So first of all, like I said, I'm Sean Tinker, live here in McMinnville. I have a daughter at Patton, a son at Grand Haven, who will be at Patton next year. I'm the safety coordinator for a construction company. I'm active on Nextdoor. I run a community, virtual Nextdoor community, sorry, neighborhood watch program up in the Grand Haven area. I think Mr. Chenoweth is familiar with my name on that. So the first thing I want to start on the back of my letter, I talk about that I believe that this ordinance, let me ask, there is not currently an ordinance for distance around the schools, correct?
Do we have the map easily available? So we don't usually have a back and forth in public comment, and I hesitate to bring that up, but we did, knowing that this was coming, we did actually prepare this map that demonstrates our current ordinance, and so I think it would be helpful if we could put that, if somebody's able to put that up on the screen, because what it demonstrates is that when we put our time, place, and manner restrictions in place, again, we were early adopters, so we were one of the first cities to do it. We excluded residential zones, which all of our schools are in residential zones, and what we didn't foresee at that time was that kind of that, this problem area, this intersection where we have a change from residential going forward. So I think this map demonstrates all of the proposed distance buffers. What I'm not sure if it shows, is, I see it's a little small and probably hard to read, I apologize, but what I'm not sure what it exactly shows is all of the current buffers. Does it have that on there?
I can walk folks through that map. Claudia or Scott, I'm not sure.
We, yeah, either.
Yeah, the timer's paused.
The timer's paused, okay.
The timer's paused, so this isn't taking your time, sir. Can we zoom in on that a little bit?
My apologies. I meant to put this up at the beginning of public comment, so it was easily reference, available for reference.
So, you know, we'll lose some of the schools here, but just to explain what you're looking at, is each of those sort of crosshatched, light green properties are school properties. We've got the green property throughout the city are the commercial and industrial properties where camping is allowed under certain circumstances. And then everything else that's sort of gray on this particular map is residential, where camping is not allowed by our ordinance. In addition, we've shown three different buffer lines, I think 250, 500, and 1,000 feet around each of the school properties, which shows where prohibited camping would be identified under each of those buffer areas. And what you'll see in most cases, there are a couple of exceptions, Patton is one of them. Most of our schools are almost entirely surrounded by residential property where camping is already prohibited. So establishing a buffer in those areas wouldn't really add any enforcement capability to our ordinance. We still would have to deal, those are areas where camping is already prohibited without a buffer. The other challenge for us is that the vast majority of camping that we deal with is already prohibited by our ordinance, and we are in the process of reviewing a couple of the suggestions that we've heard recently to see if there are some additional tools that we can apply. Most of the prohibited camping, all of the prohibited camping, rather, is required to receive 72 hours prior to abatement by state law. And so, most of what we see is already prohibited. We do regularly post, and folks either move or we abate the camps within, after a 72-hour notice. So this is a little bit of a graphic to show what the impact of a buffer might be around certain schools. So just a little bit of context.
Yeah, and I think the only thing that isn't detailed in this is that we do have hours as well associated with that. So that intersection, that on McDaniel Lane, where that transition happens, those campsites are already illegal. And I think that's the part that we've had a lot, I have personally struggled to communicate out that this wouldn't make it any more illegal. It's already illegal based on our hours, even though they're allowed, that area of where it transitions, it would be allowed for overnight camping. Should all of that camping is illegal after, is it 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM? And so, that, we're hoping to continue to try to demonstrate that there's a level of illegal activity that's happening and our enforcement is dictated by state law. And so, with that, I'm sorry to interrupt your public comment, you're trying to thought, but please, go ahead.
Mayor, I have a point of clarification.
Yeah, please.
Can you please use your mic, counselor?
I could if I wanted everybody to hear me. Point of clarification, if you could put the map back up, please. Or not. But the one clarification I had, and this is for Jeff, I understand that there are, my view is that the fact that there is still camping allowed near schools was primarily a mistake in the drafting when we passed this ordinance. At the time, I remember asking a question, saying, how is this, how does this relate to our geographic area around schools? And at the time, I believed, and I think staff believed, that because the residential areas surround the schools, that the schools were completely covered. And I think you just repeated what I believed at the time and what I now think is a mistake because if you look at Sue Buell, that abuts commercial, and then there's an area along McDaniel that abuts commercial, which I think is, are the two areas that I've heard the most complaints about consistently. And so, I'm not sure about the framework that the school board's presenting with the 350 and 500 feet and so on buffer, but the idea of taking in those two small areas in the ordinance makes sense to me because I thought that's what we were doing at the time. That's the clarification that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to go ahead with your comment?
I would, yeah.
Thank you.
So I kind of want to go back to Debbie Brockett's letter where she talks about the House bill in Martin versus Boise, or, yeah, in which the court found cities couldn't punish homeless people for lying or sleeping in public property if they had no other place to rest. If the map was still up there, we see a lot of residential area that are not around schools. So there's plenty of other places that they could go. And I guess my question is, is there, and I know we're not, we can not have any more back and forth, but I'll just put this out there, but is there a reason that an ordinance banning camping within upwards of 1,000 feet around the school couldn't include immediate enforcement and get around the 72-hour thing, right? Because in my world, working in construction as a safety manager, we talk about like, a big graph, right? And down in this little corner is the low probability, low risk. That's where we're willing to roll the dice. No one's going to get hurt. We're not going to get a DOT violation for roding a truck through one little residential area. But if the severity is here, or, and the frequency is way out here, we can't go out there, right? So what I'm looking for, and just the end of my letter, what I say is, this ordinance, I believe, benefits all concerned parties, including but not limited to parents, children, teachers, school staff, and last but not least, the McMinnville police. This is something that would give them the ability to go, hey, you can't be here. And I believe that that's true. And I think that you guys can get to something where, anyway, I think we can figure it out. I was going to stop at 12 seconds because I'm a Jim Kelly fan, but ran out of time.
Thank you. So maybe as you're drafting this letter, we CC everybody that provides public comment tonight, really specifically digging into where camping is allowed and where it is not allowed, and really specific to our ability to enforce, which is dictated by state law, and maybe even correcting some things that I've heard over the weeks, which implies that we have an ability to override state law. And I'll keep adding points to that as we receive more comments tonight for things that I want to make sure that we do include in our responses. Thank you. And who's next, please?
Next, we have Susan Newby.
Good evening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I wrote a poem today, just to give you a sense of what the citizens, at least this citizen, and I'm sure there are many others like me, how we feel about our town. It's called "Ode to McMinnville." McMinnville was such a sweet little town in the heart of the valley, Yam Hill, and all those who would come to hometown America responded to MAC with a thrill. But along came a mayor who seemingly cared not a bit for our lovely little patch of earth, and she sold our derish city till it's no longer pretty, but harsh and corrupt and a dearth. The police, they were caught between city hall and the law. Perhaps it was a backroom deal? MAC used to be a safe, friendly hometown, but now it's getting real. There are fentanyl needles in the gutters and paths and down the bike lanes our kids ride on, and the ride on, and the citizens call and complain all day long, but unfortunately, nothing is done. The homeless have dogs that pursue and attack the unfortunate passersby. Vagrants create such a mess and disturbance, you've guessed, but they're even cleaned up after on our dime. It's gotten so costly that our coffers are empty, and the Christmas lights on Third Street are a joke. We've spent all our funds because we're cleaning up bums, and the sad result is we're broke. We used to have lovely roads and places that were clear and pleasant and fair, where our kids could play and old people could walk, and there was never a thing to fear. Marsh Lane and Third Street and Riverside Drive, McDaniel and Joe Dancer Park, these are places that were safe but have suffered such a fate that you don't want to be there after dark. McMinnville, McMinnville, what's happened to you? Who has kicked you so far down the road? There might be people on duty who are just covering their booty, and it's time for the truth to be told. I'm saying that partly in jest, but partly because there seems to be very little that, you know, we can do. I have personally been attacked by dogs, by people running at me. I've called the police. They said, oh, well, if they're not carrying anything in their hands, they're not menacing you. Oh, well, it's just an ordinance. If the police himself does not see it happen, he can't do anything. I'm saying people are frustrated, and there's a real good reason.
Thank you. Perhaps in your letter, you can also include how my administration has increased enforcement and is active at the state in addressing the fentanyl crisis. Thank you.
Next, we have Leslie Toofs.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Good evening. I am Leslie Taves. I live on McDaniel Lane in McMinnville. And really, things have improved greatly on, in our area. You know, we've gone from having people parked for months to, you know, to much more reasonable times that they're, that they're camped. I really am in support of Superintendent Brockett's limits around Patton. I see far fewer kids walking to school. We live right next to Workman Park and right across from the baseball field. And the kids I see walking have a parent with them. They're, you know, they don't have that freedom. The example of the folks who are camping at the Cookie Factory area is terrible, and I don't walk over there. I walk on the, I walk on the other side, but spend a lot of time in the park. So just from someone who is living this day by day, I, I would really urge you to make some change so that these folks are not camping there, so that they're in the children's way. I also do see lots of foil on, you know, around, on the, on the sidewalks, and that, that's scary, and that speaks to the fentanyl. And then when, when the needle truck comes, that can't be great for the kids to see either. So although I, I agree that it's necessary, so I know that it's a huge problem, and thank you for what you're doing, and just want to see it get even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps, and I know this is becoming a long letter, but perhaps we can also include services provided by the city and services provided by the county? Who's next?
Next, we have Brian Zawada.
Be a Zoom. Thank you. Moment of patience, folks, while we get our next public comment.
There we go. I was just unmuted, Mayor, sorry about that. My name is Brian Zawada, I live in Amity, but I own a business located at 1245 Alpha Drive in McMinnville. This is my third time presenting to City Council, fourth if you count, my presentation to December to McMinnville Water and Light Commission. I'd like tonight to continue my journey on refining my comments and add a little bit more. I think everybody that's provided testimony today did an exceptional job, and I thank them for their comments. As I've previously mentioned, following the shooting that we experienced in November on Riverside, I've been focused on learning about the root causes and certainly the constraints to ensuring a safe environment in McMinnville, certainly around the businesses that I have responsibility for. Again, I'm very sympathetic to the homeless situation, but, but very specifically sympathetic to those challenged economically and those that are a victim of homelessness. I appreciate the comment on partnering that the mayor provided, but I get the impression through our offline comments and some contradictory remarks that I've been given that I'm just being annoying on this. And even the response today, Mayor, that you gave about my administration doing a better job, blah, 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 I think that's a poor response. Following the McMinnville Water and Light meeting in December, I understand the commission's investigating a number of options on Marsh, including but not limited to vacation, the street vacation, adding daytime security, which I think has already taken place, and the installation of rock formations. I was also challenged by the mayor to learn more following that session about the legislative constraints to enforcement, and I think I've done that. There are certainly state legislative challenges, no doubt about it. But I think by saying that enforcement is in place, it is absolutely weak and inconsistent. I understand this offends some on City Council, including the mayor, but this is a fact. Tagging them, waiting 72 hours, I get that as part of the state, but there's nothing consistent that follows. I left McMinnville, I'm out of town right now, otherwise I'd be there, but on May, on May 4th, there's been a motorhome and camper present, constantly trespassing, and they were there for 16 straight days without a 1,000-foot movement. That's not enforcement, that's coddling. And although I question how the city can afford constant cleanup, again, as of January 4th, I hadn't seen that take place in weeks. The presence of litter alone, which magically moves into our property and we have to clean up, is strictly a violation of city ordinances as well. And so, but back to limited enforcement, this takes place during the work week when Officer Height is present. After that, there's very little knowledge of what to do. And again, because the follow-up after tagging is extremely inconsistent, there's not enforcement around vehicle licensing, insurance matters, et cetera. So it's clear to me that despite offline comments, the contrary, city leadership isn't interested in fully enforcing the tools that they have. It's very much haphazard, and I think it's shallow to blame this strictly on drug decriminalization or waiting for ballot measure 110 reform. Time, place, and manner, early adopters, I think that's a nice thing to say, but I think the thing to really brag about is, let's revisit that early adoption and apply reasonable lessons learned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
That's everyone that signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening in the gallery that would like to provide public comment? Okay, please join us, as you know, fill out a signature card with the name and address. Or you can use your stamp. That was a Mark Davis joke previously only for repeat public comment, we would get him a stamp.
My name is Kim Morris, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but after listening, I felt like I need to. As you know, I was here one year ago to, in January, and that is when you, Mayor Drapkin, decided to accept our McMinnville Community Task Force. We asked to do that because of the challenges that are happening in this town, and they're continually to happen. You say you want to be a partnership, we tried to be a partnership, but when we offered suggestions to ordinances or other things, we pretty much got booted to the side, which is sad, because you have over 2,000 people that want to help and work with you to make this city safe. We do. We're not here to fight with you, but I feel like we've put in that position, and I feel like it's, I don't mean to make this personal to you, Remy, because I like you as a person, but I'm struggling with your governance, because I don't feel like it's gone to the council. We vote on this council as a whole, we have wards, we have people, we go to them, but it's stopping with you on so many things. And I don't feel that's fair, because we do, we want as a group, and we want to help as a group. But I'm struggling with some of the things, and even here tonight, I agree with Brian Zawada, that after every testimony, you've had to defend yourself. And I find it sad that you feel like you have to defend yourself. Let's try to, instead of say what we can't do and what we're doing that meets an ordinance that you feel is very needed to say, let's, what can we do? I would love to work with you, but I don't feel like you want to work with me. And as you said on January of 2023, that you agreed that you would enforce camping to the fullest, and you have said that numerous times, and unfortunately, that isn't a truth. You have Officer Height, who is amazing, and I respect Officer Height, and I expect, respect what he does, but he cannot do it all. He works eight to five approximately, he works five days a week, he has vacations, he has sick time, he has training, he can't be there the whole time. And when he's not there, very little is done. And it is super unfortunate because there has to be consistency. Criminals aren't stupid, as we found out, criminals are very smart at what they do, and they can be told, this is a safe zone, you can't camp here, just like they were told they can't camp in the park, and it's happened. So the little bit that it takes to change a little bit of wording in an ordinance to put safe zones around our school that will affect only a certain area, but they're important areas. It's the area around Patton Middle School, it's the area around Bakerfield, it's the area around the old district office in Sue Buell, all areas that the people in this room and the people that continually talk about it on Facebook and every cert, every person I went out to, to get a trespass order, has said to me, they need your help because you are the leaders of this community. We're the ones that are trying to help you, but you're the leaders that have to make that move, and we're asking you to do that.
Thank you so much for your comments this evening. Would anyone else in the gallery like to make public comment? Oh, again, please, if you'll refrain from applause and blues, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the gallery that would like to make public comment this evening? Please join us, and we'll also need you to fill out a piece of paper with your name Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Paulson. I live in McMinnville between McDonald and McDaniel Lanes. I have, I'm coming up here, not prepared, but I was a little bit taken back when you said that you get a hold of people, you notify them. I wrote a letter in December of 2022 in regards to my deep concern over McDaniel and Lafayette Avenue and the RVs that were using the park and McDaniel. I received one communication from Councilman Geary saying that there were limited resources and that the, there had to be respect for the homeless. Okay, I get that. I came before you in September of 2023 with my huge concern about the children in Patton Middle School, which is by my house, and I received no communication, nothing. I did not hear, I am hugely concerned about, there's no kids walking, they can't walk by there, there's RVs parked continuously, there's, there were packs in front of the restroom a few weeks ago, the police had to come and move them out. And I guess my, my concern again is, when you are leadership and you have a business, you take your problem and you try to figure out some form of solutions, sometimes it takes a workaround, sometimes you have to get creative, that's leadership, that's being in business. And you're our leaders, and you had a task force that did proposals, you have a superintendent that went out and got information and presented it, and we need to get all behind this, and we need to say no more. There's a reason why people are coming to McMinnville and being dropped off, it's because we're welcoming them, we're, and we're allowing them. We need to say no, no more, we're not going to do it. We don't want our tax dollars being spent cleaning up their mess. They aren't accountable, they have no responsibility, and they don't care. Is there some that do? Yes. Should we help them? Absolutely. Let's give them a welcome, figure out how to help them. But we need to say, no, you're not welcome anymore, when you can't go by any of the rules. So, thank you. Am I passionate? I am.
Thank you, I appreciate your passion. If you'll please remember to fill out the piece of paper over here and supply it to Claudia so we're able to fill, follow up with you. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment this evening from the gallery? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Oh, we have another public comment. Please join us, thank you. If you are on Zoom and you would like to provide public comment, please take the time to put your hand up now or to, or to, or to send a chat. We, we have gone about 45 minutes, we normally limit it to 30 minutes. I do understand that we have a lot of people that are, including your council and your leadership, that are passionate about solutions, and we certainly want you to feel and know, more importantly, that your voices are heard. So with that, sir, if you will state your name and the city you live in for the record, and then we'll also need you to fill out that paperwork when you're complete. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me come up here and talk. I know I'm not very old, I'm only 13 years old, but I think it's good to see the perspective of somebody who goes to Patton Middle School and has to see that every day, walking by there, and somebody who goes and practices and plays on that baseball field. And I, along with lots of the people I know, don't feel safe going by that, they don't feel like it's a good place to be, that's just my opinion. Like, being in the park, I'm fine, but like, walking out to the bathrooms, I don't feel comfortable going out there because those people are there, and like, on the accounts of everybody else, they've seen needles and drugs and things like that, and I just don't think that, I don't feel that, like, we say that it's going to be enforced, right? And like, I saw the, the trailers at Joe Dancer go away for like, two weeks, but they just came back. And eventually, it just all comes back, and it's not ever really like, permanently, or at least for a long extension of time, fixed. Thank you for letting me speak before you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, with that, we are going to move on to the next section of our meeting, which is Advice and Informations from Report, or Reports from Counselors on Committees and Board Assignments. I'll start to my right this evening, if you're prepared, Counselor Mankey.
There was no Affordable Housing Committee meeting for December, excuse me. I spent two hours with Alexandra Henjen, I think her last name's changed, I'm sorry, I don't know what it is at the moment. And we basically spent a fair amount of time talking about the Any Door Places, both here and in Newburgh. Newburgh, I think, has opened their shelter, but they're still having some land use issues. However, she feels strongly that everything will be completed and ready to go by June next of this year, so she's very optimistic about the whole thing.
Counselor Mankey?
Yes.
Remind us for the crowd, what are the Any Door Place facilities?
They're the navigation centers. We received 1.5 million from Ron Noble, Representative Ben Ron Noble, to establish one, and then we've received additional funding, and our main provider of services for that will be YCAP.
So the intent of those is to provide emergency services for homelessness and better ableness.
Can you talk into your mic a little?
So the intent of these are, these Any Door Place facilities are to provide wraparound emergency shelter for homelessness.
They should provide shelter and to provide services, yes.
And, and part of the reason that's important in a community like ours is that it gives us the ability to enforce laws to a greater degree, because then people have a place to go, is that?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you also mind reporting out on the point in time count, if you have the information easily available?
I don't. I know it's this, Wednesday, the 23rd, I believe, or it's either the 23rd or the 21st.
The point in time count is a annual count of people that are unhoused and precariously housed. Actually, we didn't have the benefit of having one during the pandemic, ours was suspended by the Rural Organ Continuum of Care. But the reason that this is very important is it then dictates state funding, that state funding goes to our county, I'm pointing back there because we are, have the pleasure of being. the pleasure of being joined by County Commissioner Chair Bershaw this evening. And so, the amount of money that is available to our area to address these issues, at least from the state level, that's not coming, um, uh, through other mechanisms or grants, et cetera, um, that is s, uh, 100% related to this count, uh, that is put on by YCAP. So, um, as we continue to address these very difficult problems, really understanding the scope of the problem gives us more resources. Or, in other words, if we get an undercount, the county receives less money to address homelessness and drug addiction. And we want to make sure that the county is receiving the most amount of money and assistance available, uh, to be addressing these things through their Health and Human Services Department. So if people have the ability to volunteer with YCAP for the point in time count, um, that is, uh, one of many tools that we will need as we continue to address these very difficult situations. Do you have the contact information for YCAP?
Not off at the, not at my fingertips, but you certainly can go online, just type in YCAP and it'll come up.
So there are a call for volunteers, that point in time count, I believe, is January 24th.
It's a Wednesday, I know that. I'm sorry, I can't bring that up.
That's all right.
I think you're ready. It is the 24th. And they are looking for volunteers, so if you're interested, please give them a call. They'd be delighted to talk with you.
And Councilor Payne?
Uh, I don't have anything to report on my committees. They haven't met due to the holidays, but, um, you can reach Amber at YCAP at 503-687-3185, if you wish to volunteer for the point in time count.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council of Governments has met multiple times the Legislative Committee. Uh, Mayor, you had directed me to use my position on the council to pressure the legislature to reform Measure 110 to recriminalize public use of fentanyl in the upcoming state legislative session. And to that end, the committee has been meeting with, uh, various partners like the League of Oregon Cities, Association of Oregon Cities, to make sure that all of the different government units that need to pressure the legislature to take those steps are aligned on policy. Uh, in addition, next week, I'll be meeting with the co-chairs of the Addiction and Safety Response Committee, who will be making the decisions about Measure 110 and getting them in front of mayors and commissioners to tell our story about what's happening in our communities to the legislators, uh, and hopefully, we can get them aware of the impacts of fentanyl on our communities. Uh, in addition, uh, MCM 11, um, I am, uh, I would like to thank Chief Scales and the staff at Provoking Hope for joining me this week, uh, to shoot a 45-minute video to discuss the challenges that fentanyl is creating for our community and the challenges that Measure 110 has created, and the implementation challenges that we're having as a city. I encourage people to, uh, watch that when it comes up on MCM 11, and I will make an effort to put that out on YouTube so that people in the audience can receive it. And I guess I would just say personally, uh, I believe that one of the reasons why our school district has always been a very effective, uh, district, is there is a culture in the school district, and I'm on the Budget Committee Board, to believe in the good faith and the positive intentions of the people that you're working with. I see, uh, Mr. Bizan shaking, nodding his head yes to that. Uh, I, that's a culture that we have in the city as well, and so, uh, I would encourage people to, uh, even if you're frustrated, even if you don't get the answer that you would like to get out of us, uh, it may be because it's something that's out of our control. You may come up with a list of 20 things, and 18 of them we can't do. But that nevertheless, the people on this dais, every single one, including the, especially Mayor Drabkin, who I remember, before I ever came on council, five years ago, and she was a city councillor, stopping her in Lowe's and giving her an earful about homelessness because of the challenges that we were having at that time. And the legal framework is challenging, the economic framework is challenging, a big reason that we're having a significant homeless problem in Oregon statewide is that Oregon is the third most expensive state in America for housing. And you overlay that with an addiction crisis related to fentanyl, and people who, once they get a, uh, a, a, a conviction, a felony conviction, very hard to get housing now for that population. It makes it very dangerous. There's very few, uh, currently, resources for wraparound services. You'll hear that if you watch the video that, uh, that I just referenced. There's very limited wraparound services for police to send people to. There are many, many gaps in services for people that are contributing to this crisis. And part of the reason we have this crisis, what seeded the crisis at the beginning for this community, was the closure of the one place in the county where old RVs could lawfully park. And there has never been a place in the city, in the county, any part of this county, to restore those lost 200 locations, where people could legally park an older RV, connect to services like trash, waste, et cetera. And so now we have a large resident population, not just here, Lincoln City, Salem, all over the state, okay? Now, we have been at the forefront in trying to address this in terms of time, place, and manner restrictions, doing what we can legally within the framework that we have. But it's challenging and it's hard. So, thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate the intention behind what all of you do, and the, the, the fact that you're here telling your stories, it's important. I, I've, we all live here, and we've all walked children to school in, in similar situations. So I definitely hear where you all are coming from, and I apologize, Mayor, for going off on that. But you can tell, I think I'm not the only one. Everybody feels like this is a huge challenge and something that we've really tried to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chenoweth.
One of my children is trying to get a hold of me, and that's always distracting, so I apologize for my delayed response. I have three, um, different committees to report on. First is EVLC. Jody Christensen gave us an update on the Nobel Grant reallocation to workforce development for a portion that was proving difficult to spend with, with the earlier direction given. She provided an explanation for the workforce programs plan, which requires an extension request to the state. Should that extension fail, she also brought the EVLC multiple pivots we could take. In that event, the EVLC gave direction to pursue a second round of business assist, assistance grants. I think we're gonna have a vote on this topic toward the end of this meeting. We also had McCray Carmichael, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Community Development Director, presented in comments on the draft Regional 2023 to 2028 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That's a lot of words, but I'm passing this all along. Parkway Committee met. Uh, with focus of this meeting was Phase 2A. For those of you who don't know, the Parkway Committee is working on trying to complete the, uh, bypass that's been spoken about since I first moved here in 1982 and probably well before that. Um, Phase 2A is the interchange, 219, and the current bypass, it's already been done. All funds have been secured for two years, and we've been in a holding pattern, as a, uh, CWA needed to be signed before a project labor agreement could be signed, which comes before the project can actually even go to bid. The CWA was approved two months ago, and now we await the union's to sign the PLA. At the time that I wrote this, we were waiting that. As I understand it, that signature has finally come in, and we can go to bid. Um, so I won't give you the rest of the concerns about what would happen if we didn't get that signed, because it looks like we're there. HLC met. Uh, they discussed and rendered a decision on weatherization and AC upgrades to 806 Southeast Hembree Street. Applicants desired to replace wood and metal windows with vinyl windows, a metal sliding door replaced with a vinyl sliding door, and wall mount AC with ductless heat pump system. The HLC decided to deny the window replacements, but approved all other weatherizations. Uh, that's it for my committee. Since some were given the opportunity to say a little bit more, I'd like to say a little bit more. Um, I am, uh, frustrated. I have been frustrated. I have expressed frustration. We had a group a year ago that was put together with the blessing of our mayor. That group, uh, worked hard to present some solutions to us. For the third time since I became city councillor, a major partner got involved in, in a situation and came to us, and that would be, in this case, our school district. And I am seeing a continued pattern, and I'm frustrated by this pattern. And that is decisions and, 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 um, uh, processes occurring behind the scenes that never come before this council, for us to actually have a conversation as a group and as a body, to discuss what we feel, how we feel, and why we feel, to look at what the legal ramifications are, to understand what's happening. Instead, the decisions take place behind the scenes. I have expressed this repeatedly in email, and it's still continuing. We had one person here that made reference to that. I don't know what they were referring to, but I'm just telling you my heart and my frustration. Sal, you just sat here and said, we're working hard. Frankly, in a year, this conversation never took place on this dais. So I don't know how you can say, please don't cut me off. You didn't cut.
I'm sorry, but I'm not cutting you off. I'm asking you to, uh, pay attention to your tone and the tone you're setting at this moment, and go on in a calmer fashion and without attacking other councillors.
I, I'm not attacking him. I'm, I'm, I'm addressing what he said. And, because I, I respect Sal, and I like Sal. I appreciate the way he communicates. I appreciate what he brought to, into this conversation. But I am gonna push back strongly, that this dais has never had a conversation since the McMinnville Community Task Force brought this suggestion to us, a, well, less than a year ago. They got paneled a year ago, so what, probably eight months ago. 20 different cities have done this. The argument that this cannot be done does not make any logical sense to me. I think it's time, when our partners come before us, when our community comes before us, the least we can do is have a discussion at the dais in front of them, so that they hear where each one of us, what we feel, what we think, what we're looking at, and what we believe is the correct course of action. We're not giving that to them. I was elected to give that to them. I can't do it. I have been very careful in my public comments, because I don't want to tear down what's, what's happening on this dais. But it's frustrating when we're not even given the opportunity to discuss it here so that they can hear where we're coming from. So, I'm putting that out there. It needs to be before us. We need to have a conversation. This council needs to discuss it, not just the mayor, the council president, attorney, and the city manager, and close doors when we're not around to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Geary. Please keep your applause down. Thank you. Councilor Geary?
The DEIAC is in between meetings. We'll meet Thursday, um, but you'll have, uh, committee appointments in your packet. Um, MURAC, um, we've had a few things. One, um, we heard an update on the Ultimate RB project. Um, we're proposing a design shret, uh, in March, uh, that will bring together the community and ask for input for the final RFP, Request for Proposal, um, where we will send that out to find, uh, developers to come in and provide that scope of work for the redevelopment of the Ultimate RB property in the Alpine Avenue area. Um, June 1st is the goal to publish that RFP and keep that moving forward, uh, throughout the year. The other item on the Three Mile Lane docket was a discussion of the creation of a new urban renewal area out in the Three Mile Lane area, and we just kind of looked and discussed the concept of creating another urban renewal out there, uh, at Three Mile Lane. Um, that, uh, MURAC, also, the Third Street Improvement, um, project just freshly met. Um, the main topic there was trees and a creation of a tree decision matrix. Um, still processing that, but there was a lot of discussion. And the Three Mile Lane project is the, is the effort to get to a 30% construction engineering document to put us in line for federal allocation of dollars to redevelop and, and improve the infrastructure and the streetscape of the Third, of Third Street. Um, Affordable Housing, uh, Councilor Menke covered that, and then our Stormwater Utility Public Advisory Group, uh, will be meeting February 13th for their next meeting.
Thank you very much. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission meeting got canceled for this month, and that will be rescheduled. Uh, YCOM isn't meeting this month, and, uh, Fire District, we had some exciting news. We hired a fire chief, and he came on board, uh, January 2nd. We'll have a transfer of power ceremony here later this month, uh, which will be public, uh, so we'll be posting that. Uh, we also amended our Fire District meeting schedule as a board. We only meet two, two meetings a month now, the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM, uh, or 1800 at Station 1 across the street, so if you want to be involved in that. Uh, we're also exploring, with the city in partnership, uh, some open flame, uh, burning ordinances, and kind of what impact that has had on, on the community around here. And so, working with, uh, Fire Marshal on that, and new Chief Godfrey. So, we'll be, uh, collaborating with data, um, between the Fire District and the city and, and bringing that together and, uh, informing our ordinance through that process as well. Um, and Bizin McMinnville, we'll meet next week. So, uh, other than that, just want to say thanks for everybody being here tonight, being an involved community member. Um, you're gonna agree with us on some things, you're not gonna agree with us on other things. I've been, uh, at that, out on that side of the dais for a number of years. I've been up here for close to seven years, and so, we might be your, your enemy today, and we'll be your hero tomorrow, but just know that at the end of the day, we all on this dais have different perspectives, and we all have the best interests of the community at heart. And, uh, we are working on things to basically make a 2.0 version of our current ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have the pleasure of supporting, uh, Representative Elmer, uh, this week at Legislative Days, uh, at the end of the week, um, and, uh, her bill that, uh, she, one of her two bills that she's introducing to the state legislature, Housing Oregon's Workforce, or How. Um, so I'm pleased to be, uh, traveling, meeting with the Speaker of the House, um, and supporting her efforts. Uh, and I'd like to thank Council President, um, who, uh, took the lead on, um, Budget Committee interviews, which were scheduled for the same time as Legislative Days. Uh, so thank you for making that, uh, additional time. Um, we've been having a number of appointments come forward, and you'll see more of them this evening as a result of, um, a, a large effort of interviewing that has happened over the last many months to broaden our many community advisory committees, which are our, um, uh, DEIAC, MAHC, all these committees with, that these councillors have been reporting on. Those are all citizen advisory committees, um, that, uh, that, uh, that forward policy suggestions to the council. So, thank you again. I know we've talked about some of these last, uh, last month, but thank you again to everybody involved in those interview processes, um, and especially to the very many applicants that applied to be on those citizen advisory committees. We again, um, uh, have had robust turnout for most of our committee positions, which is a really wonderful thing. Um, uh, we have changed the process by which we do committee appointments in the city. Um, so we've taken it from a public interview that would have happened right here, right now, in front of everybody, where we then would have deliberated about whomever was applying for our committees, and, uh, made a real-time appointment, or historically, the city just automatically reappointed anybody holding those seats. So, we've changed that, uh, so that we are sure to always be, uh, opening up those seats for people to come in and participate in the variety of citizen advisory committees. You have a number of people in the room right now that are participating in a variety of those, uh, committees, from, uh, MURAC to Planning Commission. Um, so thank you all for your service as well. And let's go to department heads, um, for department head reports. So start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items. Uh, this first item, I sent you an email about a couple of weeks ago, but just wanted to note for the public record that I'm currently, uh, on call for Yamhill County Circuit Court jury duty. Have not yet been called yet, but, uh, we'll let you know if and when I do report. The executive team met last week to The executive team met last week to begin the work to create draft work plans. One of the recommendations that came out of our joint team building and goal-setting exercise with Julia Novak last month, we plan to present some draft work plans and a status report probably mid-April, maybe early April, depending on timing. We're also trying to navigate budget deadlines at the same time. Last week, I was one of three current and former local government practitioners who were invited to meet with the new president of Portland State University, as well as some other leaders at the university, to talk about current connections and opportunities to strengthen connections with local government management practitioners and Portland State. And then, finally, most important and least related to city business, I got to hold my first grandchild, Lucy Fay, this morning for the first time, and it was awesome.
Congratulations. City Attorney David Lightenberg.
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Projects Manager Jody Christensen.
I have something later on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor for a day, Ukiah Hallensteiner. Anything to report?
I've learned a lot, and I appreciate your work for our community. And I hope to continue working for you and working with all of you, or working with you and working with all of you to make McMinnville the strongest community it can be, because I really believe in our county, in our city, in our state.
Thank you so much. City Recorder Claudia Cisneros.
Nothing from me unless Noel wants to talk about the community fair.
I'll go to Noel next, unless I'm slightly confused. Do you want to report on it? Do you want me to go to Noel for it?
I don't want to steal Noel's thunder.
Okay, we'll go to Noel for it. Informations IT Director Scott Burke.
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And then, to those joining us on Zoom, Communications Manager Noella Maya.
Good evening. We have set in a date for the community fair that will happen on Thursday, May 30th. So, save the date for that. The DEI Committee, in partnership with Communications and Engagement, we are embarking on an assessment for, an organizational assessment for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we are working through the contract process right now. So, more to come on that in the next coming weeks. And that's all for me.
Thank you. And the community fair, for those who don't know, is, this is the State of the City Address, which the city of McMinnville has been a closed-door event for many years. And last year, we returned it literally to the streets. We now held the State of the City Address right outside here in Civic Plaza. And we invite many of our partners, including the school, including the Division of the City, which is McMinnville Water and Light, and others, to come in and demonstrate how we create the infrastructure for the city. And we also get a lot of school mascots. And so, it's pretty exciting. And we'll be reaching out for some more school participation this year. Actually, we're hopeful, Noel and Claudia are hopeful. I don't say what we're hopeful for right now. But we're hopeful for some additional participation from the schools this year. And Community Development Director Heather Richards.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I wanted to let you know, we received word this week that we have been awarded a grant for approximately $60,000 for our brownfields work that we did on the Ultimate RB site that came from Business Oregon. That brings us to six different grants that we received from Business Oregon and DLCD this year for a total of about $450,000 for our planning project. So, we're thrilled with the partnerships that we're generating at the state level.
Thank you so much. That's a great update. Appreciate it. We'll now get into the business of the evening. We're starting with our consent agenda. I'd like to consider the request from the Compass McMinnville for a limited on-premise OLCC liquor license. Since that's the only item on the consent agenda, I'm not going to ask if anybody would like to have it removed, but would anybody like to discuss this? Or would anyone like to entertain a motion to approve? Or I would like to entertain a motion to approve if anybody would like to make said motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Counselor Geary and a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll now go to resolutions. We're first going to consider Resolution Number 2024-03, a resolution appointing members to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And we'll again turn to Noella Maya, our Communications and Engagement Manager, to present.
Thank you, councilors. The DEIAC recruitment sought to fill one regular position, one youth position, and one ex officio position. Our recruitment followed our new standard process as the mayor so was able to share with us this evening. It was open for approximately three weeks and concluded on November 20th. The committee received six total applications, lots of great candidates there, and we were successful conducting interviews with each of those applicants. It is my recommendation tonight that the city council approve Resolution 2024-03, appointing, reappointing Larry Miller for an additional four years, Viviana Garibai, our youth member from McMinnville High School, and Nancy Massias as the ex officio position to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Before we move to approvals, are any of the members of the committee here tonight, they might have an opportunity to introduce themselves to the council and the community?
I do not see them here on Zoom, so unless they are in the gallery, they'll have to identify themselves.
Okay. Well, we still appreciate your service. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-03. So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion from Counselor Payne and a second from Council President. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. The next two resolutions will be read under one staff report, but they will be voted on separately. So, first, we're going to consider Resolution Number 2024-01, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Chamecada Community College in the amount of $146,000 for pre-apprenticeship and hospitality certification programs for the City of McMinnville Business Recovery and Resiliency Grant. And I would call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I'm going to introduce Jody. She's going to be presenting on these two resolutions tonight.
Wonderful. And then, I think I'll just go ahead and also say what the second resolution is before you present. So, the second resolution is Resolution Number 2024-02, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend a contract with the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership in the amount of $248,400 for coordination of sustainable localized workforce programs in association with McMinnville's Business Recovery and Resiliency Grant. And Jody Christensen to present, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, councilors. Before you is an opportunity to reallocate funding that we often refer to as the Noble Grant. This is funding that came through Representative Noble in the 21 session. We've been monitoring two of our project consultants to make sure that we were going to meet the deliverables of the original grant. And it was determined that our loan program was not able to meet the requirements of the timing. They could not find enough participants who qualified for the loan program. So, that allowed us to reallocate $166,000. And in discussions with the state and with Chamecada and McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, it was determined that an extension would benefit the ability to reallocate those funds. As Counselor Chenoweth mentioned, we were waiting, and we actually officially received notification that we did receive that extension. So, the resolutions before you, again, will allow us to reallocate those funds. We've extended the time for commitment of those funds through December of '24, and the funds will be fully expended and the programs will be completed by December of 2025. So, that gives us an extra year and a half. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're seeking your support of these resolutions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Not seeing any. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-01.
So moved.
Motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Peralta. I'll, one more time, ask if there is any council discussion. Not seeing any. I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. And we will now consider Resolution Number 2024-02, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend a contract with the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership in the amounts of $248,400 for coordination of sustainable localized workforce programs in association with McMinnville's Business Recovery and Resiliency Grant. And I would ask for, well, is there any council discussion? I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-02.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Peralta. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Again, thank you to everybody that came out tonight for the open dialogue. We do hope to be getting information to you for clarity, not defensiveness, but to clarify some of the rules that govern us. And once again, thank you. And it is 8:22 PM, and this city council meeting is adjourned.